We have to switch up our schedules in order to get the children to and from school.
I just wanted to check on something Mr. Noack says. Is the power back on and the gas back on in those units?
The, um, the electric was not affected. The electric services were not affected by the, uh, by the flood. And neither, to our knowledge, was the gas supply.
So, once the power is back on, um, the only thing holding back the second and third floor units from reoccupancy is cleaning of the first floor units?
Remove, uh, removing the water, the standing water, and doing the basic sanitation. Sanitizing the floor areas so that you would not have a buildup of spores, mold, and mildew generating into the atmosphere. Uh, we have concerns about residents in that, in those buildings that could possibly have either respiratory, uh, problems, illnesses, or asthma. And this would only exacerbate the situation for them.
And as, that would answer on the second, third floor. As to the first floor, um, what's your estimate as the timeline for getting those units up and running?
That, that depends upon how fa- how quickly they can get in and, uh, and clean those particular units. And we, uh, we have not received any estimate or timeframe from them. Because if we did, we'd certainly want to be able to, uh, share it with the resident individuals so that they at least have an idea of when they can get back in.
Mr. Bond was referencing, I think your department has certain enforcement powers that you can take?
Well, we can, but we're, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place because, uh, something like this has never occurred before. And also, with respect to the, uh, private ownership, uh, with us not being able to have contact with the individual owners, uh, I don't know how our powers can affect the cleanup of that particular unit when the responsible party cannot be contacted.
Isn't the owner the responsible party in this case for the tenant to get that cleaned up as quickly as possible?
No, the property manager. We received a letter from the property-
Lynette, can you move over to the-
I'm, I'm sorry, excuse me.
That's right.
Yes, I do. You sure can. We received a letter from the property orders, owners, the property manager, asking us, um, to remove all of our things so that they can come in and pull out the carpet and clean the walls. And actually, they're gonna take four feet of the, of the walling away. And they're gonna redo it. So, the owners of the units, to my understanding, they're not responsible. They're waiting on the property managers to do it, of One Wooddale Place.
I don't think, I don't want to give you a legal opinion, and I don't want to speak for the city attorney, but I don't think that's correct. I think it's always the owner's responsibility. And they would be the ones who'd be covered by the flood insurance, not the association. Uh, let me, ma'am, before I recognize you, Alderman Police was trying to make a comment or ask a question, so let me go to him and then I'll get back to you. Alderman Police?
I was going along the lines of what you were just saying. Didn't about a year ago, we passed that new ordinance for the rental inspection of properties and whatnot? We can't, we can't, uh, get the building department to lay down some heat with that new ordinance we put in last year? It's for rental properties and management and inspections, right?
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, I think there's a couple of different, uh, recourses, and I don't want to go through the strategically on this this evening, but I will work with, uh, Mr. Noack on that. But that's one alternative. There's some issues because this is a property that's in transition from, it was part of the conversion. And there's a couple other options that may be available, unique, because this is a unique situation that we've not employed, uh, before. But there, that, uh, exists that we could pursue in hopes of assisting these residents in getting back into their par- their, their, uh, units.
Alderman Wesley?
Are you saying there was one apartment building that did not take any water at all over there?
That does not have damage.
It does not have damage.
Which unit was that?
Mr. Noack?
It is, uh, it is one of the buildings, I believe, that had undergone renovations, but, uh, there are no occupants.
So, there's no one in there? My question is, how many people, all those units are not filled, right?
Correct.
How many units, how many are being holed up that cannot move back in there? And how many units is in that vacant building that did not receive any damage? Could you answer me that question?
I don't have that answer right now.
My question, Mayor, is there a way that we could put the pressure on them, to those people, to tell them, open up that vacant building that is not being used right now, that's vacant, did not receive any damage at all, and try to help get some of these people back in there?
The, um, the management company has offered their alternate site that they own in Elk Grove, uh, replacement residence is there. But the problem is, some of them are renting in condos where it's different owners and they have leases with those private parties. But let me go to, ma'am, what, what did you want to say or comment?
Hi, um, my name's Tony Sexton. I own Lynette's apartment. And I've been in contact with not only, um, the, um, developers and the management, but also the, um, Hillcrest Property Association since the flood started, since the rains. And, um, they said, they, they were the ones that told us that they were responsible for the demolition and sanitation of the units. And that we needed to sign those papers, which we did, and get it back to them. But then they said that if they didn't contact everybody who owns, or who owns on the ground floor, that they wouldn't be able to do anybody's.
Right.
And they had to get them all. And, um, and I had talked, I called the mayor's office today, and I called Roger today. And I talked to John in the inspector's office. And they all assured me that it wouldn't take all that long if the, uh, property managers got moving. But the property managers keep saying to us that the holdup is actually you guys. And that they weren't getting permits and they, you know, and they were kind of blaming that on, which is why I'm here today.
Just for the record, Roger, it's gonna be one day permits, instant permits on this project?
I thought we just waived-
Yes, you're absolutely correct, Mayor, and that's what I spoke to Tony about earlier, uh, this afternoon. And, uh, there's no, uh, no such thing as a delay. With the power and the gas being available and the cleanup, that's all we need.
Mr. Mayor, we just waived all the permits.
Right. They've been giving us the runaround-
So, so when they're ready, we will give an instant permit and we'll waive the fee. Uh, let me go to Alderman Caddella.
Uh, Mr. Noack, you've had staff in some of these units, if not all of these units at this point, right? The, uh, the garden units in question that need to be cleaned up yet?
I missed the first part of your question.
You've had, have you had staff members in some or all of these, these disturbed garden units?
Some, some, not all are, are, are accessible.
The reports back to you, does it seem to coincide with what these people believe? That it's just gonna be flooring and, uh, the lower part of the drywall, or is the damage more extensive to other fixtures, cabinets? I mean, do you, do you, can, can the city be, uh, assist in being preemptive to the point where management doesn't go in here thinking they're gonna be able to do the bare minimum, and you go there on inspection day and go, oh, no, this isn't enough? I mean, how, can there be pre-inspections so that you can be very clear with the individuals doing the work as to what needs to be done, so there's no surprises later?
There, that's a good possibility, too. Uh, again, too, I believe, earlier in testimony, we heard that some buildings received a few inches where others received a few feet. And certainly, that will determine the situation's extent to the needed repairs. Um, naturally, the higher the water level, the more repairs that are gonna be needed. But, uh, I think the, the, the first and foremost thing that has to be done is to drain that standing water so that we can get inspection crews in there to assess that damage quickly.
Sir, your comments?
Um, can I say that there's no more standing water in any of the apartments? Um, I'm on the east side. I just received carpet damage. My sister's on the west side. She received wall damage. Is it possible, when you guys speak to them, that you can ask them if they are able to fix the ones that are, um, that are not as damaged as the other ones, so they can be readily to be occupied? Because my sister and I, we can stand this, we can stay together until hers is ready. And that, while they're working on the other ones. Can you cause them to come to some type of, um, solution? I'm looking for solutions from them, instead of running around, um, from, I spoke with Norman, he's the manager guy. He tells me they're waiting on insurance. Insurance says it's gonna be 60 days. I speak to, um, Nick, another guy. He's telling me it's gonna be a few months. I'm hearing, I'm hearing more than one thing. But what I am hearing overall is that they're just worried about, and I'm not taking this away from anybody. They're worried about getting people back on the second and third level, so they're not really concerned about us on the ground. Because underneath it all, without them saying it, it's a money issue. And I would like for you to ask them if it is a money issue. If it is a money issue, then let us know. If we need to find somewhere else, let us know in the beginning.
Sir, your comments?
Uh, good evening. John C. Fuentes. I am at, uh, 338 Grove Street. And, um, I've been in the, uh, third floor also. I've been in the, um, my condo, I'm an owner. I've, I've been at the condo for, since the storm started. And they cut the power, everything, power and gas. So, if the power was still on, then someone lied to me, because there was no power. Second, um, regardless if you're on the second or third floor, when the rain, when the rain started coming up to our building, we're at the highest level. So, we probably got the less impact as far as the, uh, down at the bottom. But my ceiling has like a, um, a little big spill on top. And I told the property manager that, um, it looks like the water's coming through. He said, just put a bucket there and we'll deal with it later. So, as of now, even if, even with the power back on, when I walk into the front door, the smell is getting more foul. It's, it's, it's really, uh, something I don't want to breathe in when I'm walking upstairs. Let alone when I get upstairs, the ceiling needs to be corrected because there's something coming through. And I'm not sure it's from my roof. I even, I even offered to go next door to find out if it's coming through the other place. And, uh, no one's occupying it. So, I think it needs a full inspection before anyone goes back in.
I think that's exactly the concern of the building department, the, the health issues raised by any damage done on the first floor, how it might affect people on second and third floor. That's what they're trying to resolve as quickly as possible.
Also, if I may add, I think they ought to, uh, be a little bit more communicative with the people that live there, regardless if they're renters or owners. Um, the person downstairs, they're Spanish speaking. And I asked the property manager, well, what about downstairs? Well, I don't know, they, whoever sold them the place, and I'm not sure if they're renters or owners. So, it's kind of, um, it's kind of like, even tonight, I just happened to see a couple of my neighbors that live there, and they told me about the meeting tonight. So, I'm willing to come to any meeting that has to do with our area and try to resolve this issue. But anyway, thanks for your attention to this matter. Thanks.
All right. Alderman Knight?
Yeah, I, I know there's a health concern issue, uh, with the mold and that, and a very valid issue. But each unit is separate. It has their own heating unit, has their own air conditioning unit. The only common areas are the stairwells and like the, uh, utility room and that. So, I mean, they are, yeah, you, you'll have smell in the hallways, but it, it's not in the units. They are all separated. So, like I said, even though it's a concern, um, as soon as they could get it cleaned up and, uh, just sanitized, uh, that would be, that issue would go away, too, I believe. And then with, with the roofs and that, that's, I don't know, that's a whole separate issue.
Any other residents wish to address this issue? Um, Alderman Lewitin?
Mr. Noack, I have two questions for you. First of all, have you ascertained whether the association has one insurance policy for the whole building? My understanding is that we have tenants and condo owners. And if they buy a policy, it's for contents and betterments that are in the unit. The association buys a policy for the building. And what I'm hearing here is there's a lot of policies. But my way of thinking is, there should just be one policy for the building. So, question one, I don't want to get asked, I don't want to ask question two, don't, you got an answer to question one. Have you ascertained if there is a flood policy for the association on the buildings?
We don't have that information.
I would like to recommend that you get it, and you get involved in working on the claim with the adjuster. Second, you were interrupted when you were about to make something that I wanted to hear the answer to. You said you're between a rock and a hard place, and you're about to give a definition of the rock and the hard place. And the first one, the hard place, was that you never ran this situation before. Well, what, what's the hammer? And what authority do you really have that you haven't executed?
Well, the hammer is, uh, with respect to the, uh, multiple ownerships. And it's difficult to deal with individual owners when you don't know who they are and you cannot contact them.
I'm gonna say, my understanding is that associations have boards of director, have a board of director. And there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a president of the board who has the power invested in him to act. Or, uh, either on his own or by calling a special session of the council, of, of, of the association. So, you shouldn't have to go and chase down every unit owner, especially when the, the converter owns probably a large number of them, and he has a large number of votes. In fact, he probably has so many votes that he has enough to carry any measure that is voted on. Can you comment about dealing with the association and, and checking on the policy? And can you, will you get involved in the settlement of the claim with the insurance company?
Um, Alderman Lewitin, that's probably going too far for the building department to get involved in the settlement of claim. We're not a party. Uh, we'll do everything we can to assist the residents and give them public information. And we will do whatever we can to pressure the association to move forward as expeditiously as possible. And to answer your question about what the hammer is, there are nuisance complaints we can file and other building department, uh, violations that can be processed against the owners of the property, owners as in the developer of the property, I should say. Uh, but for Mr. Noack or the building department to get involved in this settlement would be inappropriate.
Okay, but then, just for information, since all the tenants are interested and all the, all the condo owners are interested, and, and, and they are entitled to know this, who is the insurance company and who is the adjuster, so that they can start being proactive? That should be dispersed to them. Thank you.
Uh, any other citizens wish to discuss this issue? Yes, ma'am?
Um, I'm, I'm a social worker and I live in Wooddale. And I was just wondering if you contacted local churches in regards to, um, anybody being able to pick up your kids after school? Or if you contacted, uh, DuPage County Health Department? Or if you, because literally, you're homeless, so maybe you have different resources being homeless than just being without, you know, a person who's waiting for their house to be fixed. That would be my suggestion. And I'll give you my name, and I can pick up your son a couple of days a week if you need me to.
Ma'am, if you could identify yourself for the record-
Oh, I'm sorry, Lily Burris, 5 and 061 Wooddale Road.
Thank you. Anyone else on this issue? All right, if not, those of you that were affected on this issue, I'm gonna ask if you could go to the cafeteria. Mr. Noack, if you could go to the cafeteria, give them your business card, your contact information. And, uh, he'll be a direct point of contact with the city of Wooddale for you. Anyone else wish to address the city council on any other issue?
Good evening. My name is John Elia. I live at 543 Sarah Drive in Wooddale, otherwise known as the basin. I've been in this town for 37 years. I've flooded no less than 14 times. It's getting to be old head. I get up one morning and they're building townhouses across the street, but no improvement on the sewers. Now they build more townhouses behind Georgetown that sit eight feet above street level. Where is all this waste going? We really need something done on Prospect. It is, when I tell you a basin, you can go swim in there. Ermen and Prospect, Sarah and Prospect, the, the village could open up another swimming pool there. I'm, I'm serious. And it, it's getting old head. I'm getting tired of it. Now, unfortunately, this is the first time I've attended this meeting in 37 years, but I couldn't take it anymore. I raised my kids in that house. I want to stay in that house. I want to retire in that house, and I want to enjoy myself. What I'd like to know is, is there any plans in the making right now to increase or improve the drainage on Prospect? That's all I have to say right now, but I would like an answer before I leave.
Very good. Mr. Kramer, do you have that knowledge? I know you're fairly new to the job. If not, maybe you could get in contact with Mr. Elia later if you do not.
Correct. I'll need to talk to the engineering department and find out if they have any information in regards to that address or any proposed projects for the city.
And, uh, Mr. Elia, I do have an opening on the Wooddale Stormwater Committee. And we're looking for a representative from your area, which meets monthly to handle stormwater issues in the community, and if you'd be interested-
I'm, I'm gonna take that position.
You got it. All right.
I'd be more than happy to take it. About, am I getting involved?
Right. That's not on the agenda, so I'll have to do that, uh, to, next time the city council meets. Uh, but- Understood. Uh, Mr. Elia, Mr. Kramer, if you guys could step outside and exchange information and let them know when the next stormwater meeting is going to be, that would be helpful. Uh, anyone else wish to address the city council this evening? If not, I do not have any written communication. That brings us to mayor's report, item B. May I have a motion to approve an ordinance amending section 5, 305 of chapter 5 municipal code, city of Wooddale to increase the number of Class W licenses by one? Uh, what we have here is somebody who wants to locate in the industrial park. This would be a wine vendor, similar to one you approved a few months ago, uh, for distribution, uh, throughout the United States, I believe, and a possible sales tech producer for the city of Wooddale. This is not open consumption on site. Alderman Wesley?
Is, is this the, the target one?
No, this is not. This is somebody, a distributor of wine products who wants to open up in the industrial park. May I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
A second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
That passes ordinance O-08-38. May I have a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the creation of the Wooddale Citizen Corps Council? Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Chief, did you want to comment on the need for this, uh, resolution?
Citizens Corps, Citizens Corps has been in existence for some time. Uh, this is a paperwork function to satisfy the Umbrella Organization in Springfield, Illinois. Uh, once again, its ratification by the resolution will satisfy the, uh, charter that had already started so that we can continue with granting on the program to support it.
Anything further on the question? Roll call.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
That passes resolution dash R-08-16. That brings us to the manager's report.
Two items of information, Mr. Mayor. Um, we have scheduled a bid opening for the reconstruction of the train station for Thursday, October the 2nd. Uh, we thought we were gonna get that done on the 25th of, of September, but there were some questions from the contractors that we needed to clarify. So, we're planning on the bid opening on October the 2nd. Uh, also, at the meeting of October, the council meeting of October the 2nd, uh, we'll be bringing to the council for its consideration a contract with the consortium headed by the Lakota Group uh, for the master planning of the Thorndale Avenue corridor. Um, our staff has negotiated that contract down in terms of scope of work and cost. We think it's a satisfactory one, and it will be on the agenda for October the 2nd. And that concludes my report.
Any questions? If not, that brings us to the consent agenda. Is there any objections to any items on the consent agenda? If not, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now may I have a motion to approve the items on the agenda being a resolution authorizing the execution of an interim government agreement between the city of Wooddale and DuPage County for improvements to the reservoir. An ordinance approving a request for a permit for special use, uh, for a daycare center at 199 South Addison. An ordinance authorizing variation of side yard requirements at 161 Edgebrook. A resolution authorizing the increase in the number of sworn police officers. Approval of contract award for 2008 sidewalk program. Approval of payment request number two, special service area 13. Approval of final payment water main construction 265 Sherwood. And approval of payment number one, 2008 street improvements, uh, to air road construction. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Those items are approved. Item one is approved as resolution R-08-17. Item two is approved as ordinance 0-08-39. Item three is approved as O-08-40. Item four is approved as R-08-18. That brings us to committee chairman reports, planning, zoning, and billing. Alderman Caddella.
Okay, uh, let the minutes reflect that some members are all still here and that a quorum exists. Uh, first item, uh, I will entertain a motion, uh, approving an ordinance authorizing a variation to lot coverage for construction of an addition to a building located at 875 Lively Boulevard.
Is that your motion?
No, that is not.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
Roll, please.
And, uh, let's, I will interpret that as a motion to direct the attorney to draft the appropriate ordinance.
Yes.
Uh, anything further, question? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
No.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Okay, that, uh, that passes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Uh, present.
All right, that passes.
Okay, next item. Uh, the, uh, brief rundown, Wooddale Public Library has requested a special use be granted for what is currently a single-family residence on a, on an adjacent property for use as office space. At this time, I would like to, uh, make a motion, then I'll call the second, and then if there's anything on the question. So, I make a motion-
Alderman, this is the city council, not a committee meeting, so.
Yeah.
Uh, do you have a motion to direct the attorney to draft a special use permit?
Yes, yes, that is exactly my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
No.
That passes?
Okay, next item, a, uh, report and recommendation. Uh, my motion is to, uh, direct the attorney to draft a pre-annexation agreement and conduct a public hearing for the property located at 5 and 061 Wooddale Road.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't recognize. Alderman Wesley? Alderman Police?
Do we have a few questions on this one that was gonna be clarified tonight? I wasn't-
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, there's a couple. What you're voting on this evening is to authorize the, uh, to pursue the drafting of a pre-annexation agreement. I know there's some input that council members want, staff also has some items they wish included in that pre-annexation agreement. So, what you're doing is giving direction for that purpose. That will be submitted and circulated-
Okay.
-to ensure that it includes all the terms and conditions that you as a council wish. And once that's, uh, been received, we'll take any input, and then it'll be scheduled for a public hearing. There's a public hearing requirement under the municipal code prior to any action on a pre-annexation agreement. Again, this is contingent upon, uh, another, uh, property or development being formally annexed, which there is a current annexation agreement. So, what you're doing tonight is simply getting the process going. There is a request from the, uh, property owner to determine whether or not there was any interest on the behalf of the city to, uh, go forward and proceed with this. And so, this gives that indication as to whether it will go forward or not. Again, you'll have an opportunity to see the specific terms and conditions of that pre-annexation.
Anything further? Alderman Knight?
Uh, the motion is to direct the attorney to draw up the pre- with the terms?
Prepare the, uh, pre-annexation agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
No.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
That passes?
That concludes my report.
Public health, safety, and judiciary. Alderman Coles?
No report.
Uh, public works. Solomon Winger?
No report.
Finance and administration. Alderman Wesley?
I have, um, one report. Finance Administration Committee. Ordinance authorizing sale of personal property-
Ordinance authorizing sale of personal property.